I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have some city business, or the county pla- or the city planning has to elect some new officers. So you want to take the floor?
Our chair and vice chair were unable to attend the meeting, so the city needs to appoint a temporary chairman for tonight. At this point, city commissioners, I'll look for a motion to appoint Kurt Johnson as chair for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones have been silenced. And please note that tonight's planning commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minhahacounty.org site for viewing by the general public. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displaced on the screen. When this joint hearing is completed, the joint Sioux Falls and County Planning Commission will adjourn and the next regular business meeting will begin to consider items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction with Sioux Falls. Any final action taking on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a writ of appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, July 3 at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission and city council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, July 25 at or after 5:00 p.m. Joint meetings of the county commission and Sioux Falls City Council are held at Carnegie Town Hall, 235 West 10th Street. Now, any action taken on the minor amendment to a planned development application tonight will be final. Okay? First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? We'll file the normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff and whatever to report on each item since we just have the regular agenda tonight. And the first item on the regular agenda is approval of a minutes. John, do you want to?
Yes, Madam Chair, as we discussed, I have an addition to the minutes to propose, and it would be at the end of the new business item on page 15. And what I'm proposing to add has to do with a request that was made that staff contact public safety officials regarding security management recommendations for vacation rental homes. I made that request as we were in conversation as part of the commission review of the matter. So I'm here to propose that as an addition in the form of the motion that would read that be added in the form of a request made that staff contact public safety officials regarding security management recommendations for vacation rental homes as a last sentence in the new business section, the first paragraph.
Okay. Thank you. I will need a motion on the county side for this addition to the approval of the minutes on May 22.
I'll make a motion for that addition of Commissioner Paulson's as an amendment addition to the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second with the approval of the minutes with that addition, or the request that was made for the public safety officials regarding security management recommendations for vacation rentals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
City commissioners, we have an amended statement that was added to the minutes and approved on the county side. At this time, I'll look for a motion to approve the amended minutes, adding a request was made that staff contact public safety officials regarding security management recommendations for vacation rental homes to the end of the new business section on the previously posted minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve of the minutes with the addition as stated by Commissioner Paulson.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the minutes as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved on the city side.
Thank you. I'll move on to item number two is conditional use permit, 23-26 to transfer. Three building eligibility's from the south half, the southeast quarter. There's an exception to track one Laurel Ridge Edition and H-1, end of exception. Section 23 Township 102 North, Range 49 West, and the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter, section 26 Township 102 North, Range 49 West, and the south quarter, the northwest quarter, section 25 Township 102 North, Range 49 West, to the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, section 26 Township 102 North, Range 49 West, Mapleton Township. Petitioner is 19 Flags LLC. Landowner is Patrick and Marcia Burke. It's located between Slip Up Creek Road and Interstate 90, approximately a mile north of Sioux Falls. Kevin?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This conditional use permit is allow transfer. You'll see in this map kind of the transfer arrows where their building eligibility is located in these quarter-quarter sections. They're going to be transferred to this quarter-quarter section here. This is in conjunction with our kind of as a side thing to the recently heard rezoning requests in this area. If you recall, the rezoning request left out a triangle right here, and after this transfer, if this transfer is approved, all those building eligibility's will be placed onto this triangle. So there'll be four building eligibility's total because one has already exists in this quarter-quarter section. If this transfer request is not approved, the three eligibility's will be lost at the effective date of the rezoning. So that's probably the highlight that I was going to give to you for the conditional use permit criteria. I will just highlight that the criteria number three about utilities, access roads and drainage, that the city staff wanted to, or had a comment regarding East 72nd Street North. So this runs along a section line road right here from East 72nd Street North, and this is an unimproved section line. So as of right now, that would be the place to put, continue that highway through the area until an alternative has been presented to the city staff. So just bring that as a heads up. It's not the, since these residential eligibility's be placed here, it doesn't affect them as much as say the golf course planning. The petitioner was made aware of this concern of the potential of the arterial road, and will need to vacate the section line and work with the city of Sioux Falls regarding that. Staff is recommending the approval of the conditional use permit request with three conditions. I guess I just have a few photos, but it's mostly field and trees at this point, as you can see from there. I'll go back to the main photo, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions for him? Joe?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Did this come up in the context of our last hearing? I have a vague recollection to some discussion about the building eligibility, just wondering if this was always the plan. I think petitioners, representative petitioners here to talk about this too, or was this an oversight that we're needing to get done before this goes away? Just what's the broader context here?
No, this has always been part of the plan, and it does need to get either approved before the rezoning gets approved, or they go away, or the rezoning doesn't happen and they just stay there. That's kind of the alternatives. But the plan is to move these and kind of have a little development as a side project, and maybe the petitioner would help a little bit more on the proposal. But it was always kind of part of the plan, and we've been working on the timing of when these get presented with the petitioner. Yep.
Do you have any other questions for him? Guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Yeah, good evening. Danny Emmison, 2201 South Pender Lane, Sioux Falls. So yeah, Joe, to answer your question, it was kind of all part of the process. We brought the planned development in last month to get the boundaries established for that, and then the conditional use permit to move the building eligibility's is a separate process, which we're here to talk about tonight, and then making sure we get those moved and preserved, because ultimately, they may get developed on that triangle, which, you know, exceeds the requirements for, you know, one acre sized lots for the four building eligibility's, and/or more likely they're preserved until we bring forth a preliminary plan for future development on adjacent property contiguous to this piece.
Any other questions for him? It's not at this time. Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Misses?
Well, Madam Chair, I don't have any issues. It seems like a logical thing to do with the remaining eligibility's, and we can always revisit some of the issues around them down the road. So I don't see any issues with approving this at this time. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit 23-26.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify quick, is that with the three condition, the three conditions stated?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I have a motion and a second to approve 23-26. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
City commissioners, look for a motion related to item number two.
Your chair, a motion to approve item number two?
That is with the staff?
With the staff recommendations, yes.
No, second.
I had a motion and a second to approve item number two with the three conditions as noted by staff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. It's passed on the city side.
Thank you. Move on to item number three as a minor amendment, 23-01 to the Laurel Ridge Plan Development District to allow one single family dwelling within subarea A or subarea B on the property legally described as lot A, track one Laurel Ridge Edition. There is an exception to H-1, end of exception, and lot B, track one Laurel Ridge Edition, all in the southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section 23 Township 102 North, Range 49 West. That is in Mapleton Township. Petitioner is Tyler Childress. He's also the property owner. 47677 Slip Up Creek Road.
All right. This property is just down the road from what we just heard. If, so this has a lot of history of kind of updates and continuations on the projects as we, as the landowner develops the property. So in 2022, the petitioner moved the remaining building eligibility from this small parcel to the egg portion of this lot here. And after that, rezoned the remaining portion of this small parcel into subarea A. So this has been a progression of development. So now the subarea, the property looks like this, where it's divided into two subareas roughly in this configuration. The petitioner is requesting that the one remaining building eligibility become available to be placed on either subarea. And the purpose of redoing this is primarily because this river here is, has a floodplain that develops most of this remaining land. So the petitioner, that's part of the reason why we go on either or the locations. The conditions for the approved 2022 transfer are still going to be applicable for this site. So the conditions of four, conditions, the right to farm notice, the access to the dwelling must use one of the two existing driveways currently used at either 47675 or 47677 Slip Up Creek Road. So that'd be the two driveways here and here for the property. The septic system, because it's a water source protection overlay district, gets res, is for the future residential develop, dwelling must be engineered and approved by the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources prior to issuance of a county septic permit, and that the county septic permit must be obtained prior to obtaining a building permit for the single family dwelling. So staff is recommending approval with those same conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for him?
Kevin, can I ask you a little bit more about the either-or concept? I'm used to seeing it like the prior application where we know the exact location. My guess is that it's, the first stab is to do subarea B here, but we don't know what the cost of the bridge improvement is perhaps, and that's why we've got this A proposal possibly. Also, can you explain a little bit more about why we don't know whether it's just one particular location?
That question might be best answered by the petitioner, why he, there is the question of either-or location. It might be a cost thing. There is some development, developable land over here that's not in the floodplain, kind of along a ridge on this side of the property, so.
Very good. We can ask the petitioner.
Any other questions for him?
I have a question. Could you talk about the statement, a major amendment to the planned development will be required to allow uses such as vacation home or short-term rentals? What's the major amendment?
Okay. So this is being proposed as a minor amendment. A major amendment would change the language in the zoning district as a planned development. So if, it'd be similar to say the petitioner wanted to add an allowed use such as a fireworks store or a fireworks stand on the property, just hypothetically. It would take a major amendment to add that as an allowable use on the, as a development in the site. So a major amendment as an Airbnb would be different than what is currently allowed as a single-family house on the site, so, per the residential dwelling.
Madam Chair, I mean, simply put, I mean, we're simply just approving a residence tonight. We're not approving another event hall, an Airbnb, anything alike, anything that would be, that we're all going to have to come back before us again.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Tyler Childress, 47677 Slip Up Creek Road. Yeah, we tried going over to subarea B and, you know, having that road access, and the city land, city bridge is kind of been halting our project. So we kind of stepped back and want to go put our, our family, our house, our kids, and raise them on subarea A up there. So that's pretty simple for us, that we just want to build a house and live close to our business.
Any other questions for him? Guess not. Anyone in the audience care to address this item?
Please state your name and address. Tina Beck, 47645 Sorrel Street, Sioux Falls. I have a concern with Tyler wanting to build a house out in this area. As we all know, he bought a house, tried to open it up as an events hall. That you guys denied, thank you. But he has since been operating that house that he purchased at 47644 Slip Up Creek Road as an Airbnb with no permits. He has not obtained the correct permits. He was sent a cease and desist letter from the planning and zoning department on February 17th of 2023. He ignored it and continued to rent it out. After the meeting here on February 27th, he cornered us that live out there and said, "I have a South Dakota lodging license, that's all I need." So he's continued to operate this by not following the ordinances and the laws. And we, this past weekend, called the sheriff about a car out there, and now we have been informed that we all have to watch out for this car because the owner of the car and the car are well-known for, quote, thievery. So this car was out there, went into his residence, left, came back and spent the night. So now we all have to be on the watch for one of his guests. My concern is that he's going to say this is for his house, but it's not. He only follows the rules and the laws and the ordinances that he wants to follow, and if he doesn't like the law or the ordinance, he doesn't think it applies to him. He's getting away with it now. We have contacted the planning and zoning weekly. They have sent it to the state's attorney's office, but they tell us their hands are tied. The state's attorney's office tells us they can't tell us anything. It's been at the state's attorney's office since April. Why would we want to approve another potential problem with Tyler out in this area before solving the first problem? Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Please state your name and address.
My name is Kylie Beck, K-Y-L-I-E. I grew up at 47645 Sorrel Street, 154 days. 154 days ago, January 23rd, I stood in this exact same spot speaking to, I think, almost all of you. At that time, I spoke in opposition of the petitioner's request for a conditional use permit that was mentioned previously by the previous speaker here. I made mention how we have rules, we have policies and procedures, and those are in place for a reason. And when they're not followed, or individuals are allowed to operate without following those, the purpose is lost. Law and order exists for a purpose of establishing justice, and when they fail in this purpose, they become the dangerously structured dams that blow the flow of social progress. And I believe that applies even to situations of minor amendments all the way to a criminal proceeding. After myself and many others expressed concerns with not only the location of the home, but with the plans as a whole, and Mr. Childress and his way of operating, the commission made the right decision and denied that conditional use permit. Except the decision of the commission, the denial of the permit did not stop the operation of the home as an Airbnb or a VRBO. I even looked today in preparation of this meeting, and the home is still listed to be able to rent on VRBO and Airbnb. Now, I don't live out there anymore, but it was brought to my attention and my understanding is that a cease and desist letter was sent, yet operations continued. Further, I believe law enforcement has even contacted in the past few days due to the actions of some of the individuals that are renting this space. Now, I know that's not the issue here before the board today, but I do think it's important that we don't view this specific minor amendment in a vacuum. This is larger than just the minor amendment, and all of these things do need to be considered to understand whether or not this minor amendment will actually be followed in the way that's been presented. The neighborhood is tired, tired of the incessant tries and clear ignorance of instruction by this commission. I would be remiss to not attempt to explain the constant and blatant disregard for the wishes of the neighbors, but also for the decisions of the commissioners. As a citizen of this community, I believe that the commissioner's decision has been disrespected. I fear if given an inch, a mile will be taken. My understanding is that this minor request is to move the location of a future single-family dwelling to be closer to the road, which is ultimately closer to the event center. And it's listening today, my understanding is that this home plan was originally in the blue square. Then he used up his building permit capabilities in the blue square, once he moved it to the red square, and now he wants to move it back to the blue square after he was able to build all of the commercial buildings he wanted to build in the blue. Sure, we can be told that this is where the owner and his family will reside, but based on the track record, this to me seems a lot more like an attempt to create another Airbnb or rental home. I am asking the commissioners today to vote to deny this request of a minor amendment. I think it's been made abundantly clear, or attempted to be, but does need to be made clear again to the owner that this denial does not allow him to continue doing what he wants, like he did with the denial of the conditional use permit of the rental property and completely disregarding the wishes of the commissioners. Thank you.
Kevin, you want to address, have we, you want to come back to the podium? Have we taken numerous complaints?
Yes, the Becks have been contacting us every week since the, the commission regarding Tyler's other property and the bed and breakfast that was denied on his property. It has been turned over to the state's attorney for, for what actions need to be done next, and we were waiting for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Maggie is going to, Maggie, you want to address?
I'm going to talk to Kevin.
Okay. Go ahead. John?
Well, I was wondering if there's someone on the county staff that could comment on the situation of processing applications when there's also a process of cease and desist and other issues that are part of the situation.
Yeah, I can address that. Scott Anderson, planning director. I, I think that it's, it's, they're two separate parcels. So I, the, the fact that there may or may not be code enforcement issues on one parcel doesn't, I don't believe legally can be held against this parcel. So they are two separate parcels and separate actions. We'll just leave it at that.
Any other questions? Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Please state your name and address.
Kristy Childress, 47677 Slip Up Creek Road. Tyler Childress' wife. Separate properties, this is for our personal residence, has nothing to do with our Airbnb. We've had neighbors break into our Airbnb. We have all kinds of issues with them ongoing. It's very hard. They're very confrontational. I have five kids that I love and adore, and so, it's so hard. They are not nice people that we have to deal with all the time. We are literally trying to raise our family and do the best thing we can do. We own that land, whether we want to build on B or A, that's our choice. We, I just would appreciate your consideration of, we're people, and we're ganged up on, and whether you see it or not.
Anyone else care to address this item? Close the floor.
Well, Madam Chair, a few opening thoughts here. I would say, I think I have sympathy for all sides here. I would probably fall down in agreement with our planning director that this is probably a separate matter at this point. I would want to give due process and proper procedural outcomes from the state's attorney before we would make any judgments, but I think, still gives me pause because I think a track record and your willingness to abide by the rules should be factored in in some manner, because I think this A to B, B to A is a little bit of a wanting to have your cake and eat it too. We obviously approved, I think that was back in 2022, so before my time, but I do recall this issue, and we moved to housing eligibility, much like our last item we just did for a valid reason, to allow for subarea A to be zoned commercial, at which point, again, that building eligibility would have vanished. So we needed to take that action to preserve that building eligibility, and then now, again, it's wanting to have the cake and eat it too of having it zoned commercial, but then bringing it backdoor into A. So I, I get that it, so it requires a minor amendment, probably not the biggest deal in the world. I'm inclined probably to approve it in, in this instance, but just, I don't know, I'd look to staff to, to see if there's any additional, and to my colleagues, if there's any additional conditions we need. there's any additional, uh, conditions we need to make sure we have a few more checks along the way that we can check up on this as facts and circumstances might change, um, such that we, we can kind of, uh, again, I, I just don't want this to, to backdoor into something that, uh, was unintended our, on our end and causes further issues. So those are kind of my overarching thoughts at this point, but definitely interested in my colleagues' thoughts.
Commissioners, any other further comments? Mike?
If I may, I guess, you know, I do look at this, and I just, I do, um, I echo a lot, uh, the same sentiments that, you know, it's unfortunate there's somewhat of a track record of listening or not listening. Um, again, I wanted to give the, the state's attorney and planning staff their due process as well. Um, but if I look at this simply as a land use matter, which this board is really kind of encumbered to do, i- it does seem like an appropriate use. Um, you know, Jim Smith, for lack of a better name, came for us today on the same property. I wouldn't have had his hesitation to approve it. So I think, you know, understanding what we're truly embodied to do, I do think this is an appropriate use and would make a motion to approve.
Okay, anyone else?
Madam Chair, would you mind if I opine, uh, before there's a motion from the county?
Sure.
Um, in my history, I guess, uh, we're allowed to look at the applicant's acts and behaviors regardless of whether the property's next door, regardless of whether it's the same property. And, uh, this has been quite the process of this property over the course of the last few years. There's a lot of history here, and it seems like this one's come for us quite a bit and pretty contentious with the neighbors. Um, I don't want to jump in the way of due process at all, but I wonder if, if the county would perhaps be open to punting the ball here for 60 days to see how that shakes out a little bit, uh, and maybe come back at a later time and consider, uh, what the state's attorney, uh, moved forward with or did not move forward with, and maybe we can have a little bit better idea of what this actually looks like at that time. So, something to consider.
Any other further comments on the county side? Joe?
I guess I'd ask a question to my colleague on the city side. But that's probably the simplest, uh, short-term solution, if you will, to just kick the can down the road. Are there any other substantive amendments or, or additions to conditions that would, that would just put teeth in what we're trying to do? Because I, I just fear that we'd end up in the exact same spot 60 days from now and no real material change, and then we're just stuck with, I think you're getting the sense on the county side, we're inclined to approve just because I think that is, as a body, I think in certain objective ways, I think it probably merits an approval, but I do, I get where you're coming from, and so just looking for any other alternatives. I think that's a constructive one, but just probably buys us 60 days and no more.
Any further comments?
I guess there's one more thing to add, if I may. I mean, to understand that unequivocally, he can't turn this into an Airbnb, VRBO, uh, without a major amendment. Um, I think that was pretty clearly stated by staff that this is truly just a, a single-family dwelling, I should say, without a major amendment, he had to come back before us. Um, that, I mean, I feel like we're really just approving a single-family home here. There's no way, based on the current, uh, minor amendment, that he could make it into an Airbnb or some of these other properties that cause concern.
So what I'm hearing that I think addresses my concern is that just the distinction between a minor and a major amendment cover our ability to reconsider this at a future date if it were to come to be a problem, whereas we don't need any necessarily additional, uh, restrictions or conditions placed on the minor amendment. Um, so I, I follow that logic, and I guess I'm kind of on the side that I don't know that a time delay changes those circumstances. I think we still have the tools at our disposal to deal with it down the road.
Yeah, and I, I'd just say I'd understand and I'd echo, uh, Mike's thoughts on that. I think that's definitely true. Maybe comes down to, I feel like perhaps there's an enforcement issue that needs to be addressed, um, in the future, and, uh, this is all new to counties and everybody, so maybe that needs to be ironed out a little bit and maybe better improved, but I think you're right, definitely take a major amendment in order to, uh, get approved for Airbnb, VRBO, so that makes sense.
The, the difficulty I have with that, if we ju- we just heard that it's not, you know, being followed, you know, with this existing situation, you know, that, that's a, the concern that I have is, uh, is granting another opportunity to not adhere to the requirements and the regulations, um, as, has been the case in the past, you know, from all that's been reported. Uh, so at, at what point in time, you know, when you run out of building eligibility, so I guess we won't approve another one, but there won't be another one. The rest of them are not following or adhering to the regulations as, has been identified here as an issue that's going through a legal process that will have some outcome. I don't know what impact that might have on our decision, but that might be worth discussing is what will come out of that, or what, what, what do we anticipate? Because it was filed, I, I would assume, so what will happen?
My response, just to take that to the logical conclusion in the other direction would be, even if we denied this, you, one could argue, uh, a lawless person could go ahead and build it anyway, you know, so it, it, uh, you know, uh, on sub area A, you know, at, at what, I mean, I guess we would deny the building permit, um, at some, but at some point, uh, we are, I think what we're seeing is we are merely a legislative body. We need an executive function to enforce the law, and so that's going to be a separate action, and we're going to need the state's attorney to take the appropriate action, and I don't know that it's right for us to prejudge what that outcome would be, I guess is what I'm getting at. Um, so taking a step back from that and maybe just setting aside that, yes, some enforcement mechanism needs to be taken, but that there will be two sides to that story, and you want to let that play out fairly. Um, I guess I am still probably, again, this isn't, uh, wholeheartedly an easy decision, not a slam dunk, but I think I'm in, still inclined to approve, uh, and go down the paths we need to enforcement mechanism-wise, uh, as we go.
Madam, Madam Chair, can maybe someone from the, from the county can answer this too, but, um, it, what are the other options? Is there, can the, um, the boundaries or the plats be redrawn? Or is this the only avenue? What, what are the other avenues, if there are any? Can you speak to that?
Um, as, as far as other avenues?
Like, can the, can the sub area commercial boundary lines just be moved further into the egg, into the red? Does it matter where those lines are for the eligibility?
Um, so if you were to change those lines, uh, that would also take a major amendment, changing the location of where those sub areas are.
So it'd be the same process regardless?
It would be a similar process, uh, that would be a little longer process for a major amendment, yes.
Thank you.
Any other further questions for him? I guess the comment I have is, um, it is for these bodies to decide what the land use is. Um, that's why there's conditional use permits, that's also why we have to have other permits for whatever may or may have happened. Uh, I do understand that there's some issues prior to this minor amendment, but, um, I tend to agree with what Joe has said, and we could prolong it, but I don't think it's gonna, I don't think that that's going to make a different decision.
Motion, Mike?
Yeah, well, you can, not to sound too redundant, but again, understand what this panel truly is embodied to do, we truly do need to look at this as a land use issue, and this is an appropriate land use. So again, with this stated, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the county side for the minor amendment 23 dash oh one. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
City commissioners, we have an approved motion on item 23 dash, excuse me, item three, 23 dash zero one, minor amendment. I look for Commissioner action on the city side.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, uh, sorry, with the staff recommendations?
With the staff recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second with the, uh, four conditions. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just add, uh, like I previously stated, um, I probably would have preferred to see a deferral on this item. I think at the end of the day, I'm, I'm happy to admit that I think that that's, uh, an enforcement issue and probably outside the scope of this body, um, but it, it's just been a difficult, uh, area to deal with. Um, this, this development has been really hard before this body, uh, in the past, and I, I just don't want to see issues going forward. So, um, at the end of the day, I've got to look and say, hey, this is a minor amendment to allow for single family dwelling home, and I think for that reason it makes sense, so I'll be in support of it, but I can't say that it's not painful.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Just for clarity then on this one, I am going to call the roll for the vote. Uh, those in favor of approving, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Nyberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulally?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
No.
Passes three to one on the city side.
Thank you. Any other old business? Any new business? I'll make a motion to adjourn on the county side.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
City commissioners, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. So moved, yeah.
Motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned on the city side.